City Council, City Council convenes a special meeting on September 29th, 2019 at 2:00 PM. In the council chambers located in 2001 on the Wood Drive, Castle Hills, Texas. We're to call the special council meeting to order and determine if a quorum is present. A quorum is not present, considering.
Okay, I request that we send the police out. The police first call. City people remember their contract they have with the day. And if that doesn't work, we send the police out to get somebody and fill one of the two seats.
I would deny it standing in the police out is something we can legally do, but I assume that we can call. So I'm, if, you know, since we can't call meeting to order, I'm going to ask that, uh, I don't know if we recessed the meeting as it started. Uh, we're going to call them and see if they can please show up considering the urgency of the meeting.
Can we stop recording?
September 36th.
How do you pause?
I can see the units available, Mayor, to run by with one house or the other.
If you just my dispatch just called?
Yeah.
You'll be there for two minutes.
Now, how do you want me, how do you stop it? Without, I was like, do you want me to just leave it on? Just FYI, we still are recording, so.
Looking at the yard, looking at the big pot, you know, grass going. And Johnson grass, and it goes like crazy. It's like all over the place, and it goes home. It's not hacking that.
I don't see you.
Yeah.
Thank you for joining us. Uh, we now have a quorum, so we can proceed. We're calling the Castle Hills City Council Special Meeting to order and determine if a quorum is present. A quorum is present. Do we have anybody here for the presentation, Travis? Our favoring people is demonstrating pledge allegiance to Chief Simmons, who you have meeting us.
Certainly. A pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one may position under God, indivisible, of liberty and justice for all.
Okay, uh, we don't have any ballots, we don't have any ballots in this presentation, do you?
Yeah, we have dispatch. I left it for dispatches.
Mr. Ranger?
It was an email.
Thank you, Sam.
Okay. Packages too?
Yeah, there were no files, just in dispatch.
Is that the citizen speaker?
Yes, sir.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Jim Gaines. My name is Jim Gaines, I'm at the 503 Amper. Uh, first, thank you to everyone for attending our council today, this is something we needed to do. Uh, my only question is, how does the budget take into account the money the city has lost due to recent legal tanglements, are we accounting for that somehow in the budget for next year? Because I want to make sure that doesn't affect our police satire and our public works.
Thank you, Mr. Gaines. We will give those comments addressed. Uh, next, we're going to start with the public hearing. This is an opportunity for the citizens to address the city council on any issue. City council may not discuss any presented issue or take any action on the issue. A sign of chief is available for citizens who wish to address the city council. Please look at your remarks, three minutes topics of operational concern, shall be directed to the city manager. Comments should we, should not personally attack the speaker, city council staff. So it is 2:07, and we're going to close the public hearing on the 2020 fiscal budget. Do we have any last seat? Yes, Mayor.
Yes.
You just kind of hold.
My name, my name is Norman Cancun.
Yes, sir.
My address is 140 Twinkle. Uh, next year is important for many, many reasons, um, and this budget covers 2020. It's not the anniversary of women's right to vote. And so I want to, want to remind everyone to think of a way to celebrate that and to mark that wonderful amendment to our constitution. But it's also an important year for the United States Census. Uh, the census folk will be reaching out and they expect partnerships with local governments because the census is going to count us locally. This is a person, this way of being heard, that we appear, that, that we're proudly in Castle Hills. And I don't see the budget mentioning the census at all in terms of budget resources. We will intend to propose to, to be a strong partner to, to, uh, those, those folk who are underpaid to go door to door and count the census. One issue we're facing in particular this year that we didn't face 10 years ago is the census does part of its job by calling you and then following up with you. And the problem with robot calls, hardly anybody picks up the phone anymore. If it's not someone they know, if they don't recognize who's, who's calling them, they're, they're not going to answer, they're not going to be a true partner. So if, if, if that census is covered somewhere already in the city's communication budget, in the city's outreach budget, in the city's, uh, care for the safety, and, and we need to be fully counted. So I yield a rest of my time back to you all, and thank you.
Mayor, Council members, my name is Alondo Villoso, I'm a civil rights attorney, bill on avoiding masification. I was involved in the, uh, case in New York City where the Trump administration attempted to put a citizenship question on the census law. And like I pointed out to the federal judge, uh, in New York, the census is the gold standard that has been used by the federal courts throughout the decades to resolve disputes involving the allocation of political power and federal funds. We have had 24 censuses since the Constitution, and it's never, ever been politicized until this decade. For the first time ever, this administration has decided to politicize the taking of the census by inserting, uh, a citizenship question, which they know, and the scientists at the Census Bureau said, that will lead to an aberration of the actual results. And so, uh, my urging to the council is to be involved and make sure that the census, uh, works for everybody. Because every time you miss a person, every person missed under the census count results in $2,500 lost in federal funds over the genuine period. Probably in America, you're talking about maybe $130 million that's lost. So I urge the council to take leadership positions and, uh, make sure that we have an effective census. We succeeded in that also in New York. We won a four-three, uh, four, uh, five to four vote in the Supreme Court, barely won, but we knocked out the citizenship question. And the census is now going forward as, as it has gone forward the past 23, 23 decades. So thank you for your attention, and I urge you to pay, pay, pay focus and attention to the citizenship and the census issues coming up next, uh, in April.
Mr. Mayor, have we been having public hearings since this week?
Where are the public hearings?
In San Francisco.
That's right.
I'm hearing very sweetly about that.
I haven't heard anybody do that, that's the one.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mayor.
I actually asked Mr. Rappleye to program any additional budget for citizens 2020 because this is something all cities have been asked for, so this is certainly a point. And I'm not.
Commissioner Clinton, excuse me, this is still public hearing, not the budget. Yes, uh, I did hear references to the budget, I hope what Mr. Rios said is not too sad. Uh, but this is another time for the council to be discussing this issue. And I respectfully ask Mr. Clinton to, um, hold your comment and question until the council gets to the next agenda item. After everyone of the citizens that we wish to speak under the, entering the public hearing are given that opportunity to speak. And then the mayor can close the public hearing and move to the next agenda item. Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner. Do we have any videos of other accounts? Okay, it is 2:12, 2:13, we're to close the public hearing, move on to item number two. Discussion possible action by record vote on ordinance number 2019-09-29-8. To balance this way your 2020 operating budget for the City of Castle Hills, Mr. Rappleye.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, right now I have, um, I could do a presentation with an overview of some of what I did a couple of weeks. Uh, or if, uh, we could just get into particular questions about the budgets, um, or if there's other items the council would like to see. Uh, I'm sure you're aware, Mayor, um, if you'd like, would you like me to do the presentation? It's just kind of what I did on the 13th, I'm excusing, um, trying to remember that date now. But I can do that.
Counsel, do I have any requests?
I've seen the presentation before, so I'd like to make a motion that we approve the budget, ask the votes by Mr. Rappleye.
We have a motion, we have a second. I want to make our discussion, Mr. Ranger here.
I'd like to start. Thank you for your presentation. I'd like to start. I have several questions. On page five of the F of the index, second paragraph, historically, a sales taxes that was so good with the city's budget. The FY 2020 proposal for the census served an increase of 7.32% over the FY 2019 projected during the West. Had we come up with that?
Well, that was just basically looking from a desорal standpoint, obviously looking at the last five years. Um, we took into accounts, um, each month, the sales taxes growing, uh, from that standpoint. So we were conservative on a, an adjustment to that sales tax for additional revenue. Because we've seen real benefit over the last year and it's been up, um, on that five-year average. But that's kind of how we can determine that from a desорal standpoint.
On page eight, under, uh, this paragraph, you have a workstation upgrade fund 42236. What is, what is being upgraded in this fund this year?
That's, that's nothing this year, that's, what is in there for, um, routine or annual, um, I'm not sure if you remember the last time those were changed out.
I think we're doing 2021, I believe.
2021, it's the change of the PCs in everyone's office. So that's the fund, so in 2021, we'll come through and get everyone new PCs basically upgraded.
Is the change in the PCs that the advice of people who sold your PCs?
I'm sorry, Councilman?
Is the change upgraded of PCs done in the advice of people who sold your PCs?
Well, them and our, and our contract IT company, as well as other IT folks that we've had in the past, they all recommend a three-year in order to, uh, provide optimal, uh, workability and function.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Page 16, under general funding, change in cost of research is $167,400,000. Is that primarily due to salaries?
That is the increase in salaries, um, which include benefits, the increase to healthcare costs, um, the two additional full-time positions and the COLA.
What additional?
Sorry, what?
That's the, the two positions that were eliminated last year.
Yeah, two positions, and then of course they were partially funded, one for nine months, one for six months. And so, uh, those are two fully funded positions now that make up that total.
Mr. Rappleye, who are my positions, Mr. Rappleye?
That's the permanent clerk, and then the, um, administrative assistants, the finance director or finance clerk itself, that is the position.
Thank you, sir. With police department, there's an increase of $8,096,000, is that primarily due to the same situation that had been?
That's, again, um, COLA healthcare, uh, we saw 15% increase in healthcare versus last year, last year was about 9%. And so, uh, a lot of those factors have been personal, add to that, uh, escalated to a little 15% in healthcare within the police. Um, that's obviously the education certification as well, uh, for those officers are moving on that year for, um, their, their step or their advancements in that year.
The changes of various line items in reference budget, probably all based on historical data?
From, I'm pretty not sure, I mean, that's, we're going to be, we've been using the five-year average, um, to look in, uh, if you can see the totals as far as the line items across the four departments, and are you asking strictly about the line items, or are you asking about personnel overall?
Line, line items.
Okay.
Why, why has employee insurance gone from $15,000 a year to $42,000 a year now? When it was steady for a long time, 18, 14, 19, 15, 20, now 41? Why is all that enormous stuff?
Okay, you're talking about the healthcare in particular, to the one department or possible?
Well, I was looking at the line item.
Are you looking at the third apartment?
Yes. Under the admin office, their budget, under employee insurance, employee insurance starting in 15 was 14,000, 19,000, 15,000, 28,000. Five-year average, 19,000. And it looks like we're projecting 41,900. Why is this enormous increase occurring in one year? There's an enormous increase.
And I think, let's see, we're looking, sorry, I'm trying to find what I'm, you're referring to.
At the line item.
Is it 1150?
Yeah, 1150.
No, it's not 1150.
It's 1150. 1150, 15.
I would assume that's part of our healthcare costs have increased. Um, we do have, uh, a couple of employees who are, um, I'm not going to speak specifically, uh, but the, the dutchles on theirs are a little higher, and they've taken a hit to our healthcare plan because of a certain medical cost, um, in regards to those two employees.
That's not, okay, that's not what, the way the insurance is, is, has nothing to do, it's overall, all departments.
Correct.
Okay, possible word, we have the health insurance re-credit came back and a 15% increase, which is included in the budget. But in the admin, we had two people that were not on the insurance at all because of positions were not longer filled with the last year, with the budget we're currently in. So putting those back in is part of that increase.
That was a change.
Because we didn't have insurance for those two positions that were now just part-time, temporary.
So basically, to answer your question, those two are rolled into, uh, the two new positions as part of benefit factors.
All right. I see some work, uh, seeing it looks like we can answer. I'm going to go with Mayor.
We have changed our practices here for IT. We've actually had a little savings because we don't have someone here on site. We, uh, contract with, uh, Barcom, who helps us with, uh, monitoring administration of our servers and our IT, uh, components here. Um, but they also come once we be on site for a few hours, which has made a difference in savings and actually having someone here on board to help troubleshoot if we have any IT or PC issues.
Under property casualty insurance, um, it's an increase of $47,000. From a five-year average of 101, uh, excuse me, five-year average of 70, now goes to 105. I guess that's not way out of bounds, because I see one year, 105,000. But $47,000 increase in property casualty insurance.
So, last year, in the year, because I'm going to go back, this is 2019, 2018, there was an increase from 2017 to 2018. That goes in effect October, your budget year is January. That wasn't captured in 2018, and 2019, the budgets we're currently in, I was doing all the work, I was not involved in that, and there was another increase. So we actually, as you can see, at the end of the year, for 2018, it was 101,000, about 15,000, that's deductibles, but it rightens itself overall increase. And that covers?
Those security.
Property, yes, yes, well, it's, it's the overall increase from property casualty, uh, vehicles, um, the entire, and all of it.
Thirty amount.
It's 13 amount.
Mr. Rappleye, is that anything to do with the increased assets that we're covering now?
It's part of the coverage, but not necessarily property added, it's, it's mainly deductibles on, um, like, like more of said property casualties, you know? So if there are claims against the city, um, and we have, um, obviously when they re-rate us, they have, we have more claims versus, um, previous years, the deductibles are going to drop our kids and, and that's like.
You had the headstones in, in 2016, 17 year, so if ever a fall, city saw a huge increase, again, we didn't capture it. When I was working, I apologize, I didn't capture it all, um, in that, I didn't have the book, I didn't have the information. So you actually had an increase in 2018, it was not captured. You had to pay it, but it was just one of the budgets, so when we fixed it this year, it looks larger. Really, this year opened up about 14,000. What we might have to do.
On page 30, is a rescue, this looks to be a fire truck, this, what, uh, the city. Exactly, is a rescue truck the latter truck? No. What is a rescue truck?
Currently, the rescue truck is what we use to go on most of our EMS calls, it has carries all of our EMS equipment and so forth.
Rescue EMT truck?
Yes, yes.
That answers the question. Thank you. I'm going to go to the regular utility fund. I'm a policy artist, I'm going to thank Mr. Verado, saving the city, tens of thousands of dollars, by the excellent work, bringing out that great area, uh, that's the work. And, uh, and Mr. Rappleye, I've been hoping you'd do 10, 20, 30, whatever it is, so thanks for really being, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir, roughly equated, you probably got $20,000 in savings to the city.
And Mr. Ranger, I just want to add that to do that, Mr. Verado was working 12, 13-hour days, seven days a week to maximize his rental of the equipment, so I really appreciate everything, uh, you did to save the city money and we did that. Thank you for the recognition, thank you.
So just real quick, Councilman, the, the quotes we got were anywhere from, I think, uh, 40 to 120,000, um, from that standpoint. The rental of the front of their process, about 2,500 or so, so between Ray and his crew, time and labor over about 10 days, 12 days, uh, able to accomplish that in, uh, in minimal cost to him.
Uh, same outside the box, let's see the thing for it. On page 35, revenue is lower than. Let's see. Why are we projecting a decrease in money that's coming in for revenue is lower than?
It's the permit side.
Are you looking at 69, excuse me, 8604?
There's no change.
Well, I don't, uh, yes.
So the permanent fee?
Excuse me, I'm looking at, uh, 86, yes, oh, yes, 8604. Isn't that actually 4045?
No, actually 445, sir.
Uh, 10, double zero, 8604, revenue is lower than. I'm just curious, I'm just curious why it projects to be that, so it increases. It's so odd, but, uh, maybe assistant counties.
Previous year, the year we passed it, 2019 year, uh, your boy, David Taylor, helped me work on that number, and she didn't have anything in the future that would actually increase what we're meaning for revenue on permit side. Because that's when, when it comes in, um, so you don't have any expected construction according to that fee for that permit.
That doesn't necessarily say that.
It is possible, even though not, I don't think it's going to change.
Implement an back fee.
But it's a permanent fee, yeah, it's possible.
All those sure goes.
I had to get a megaphone next to this announcement, the, the new digital billboard that was just put up a couple of months ago. Uh, this new revenue is taken into account for next year and following years, obviously, it's very much fun, at the 80%.
Under the child safety fund, and some of this money to be used for sidewalks, and we're dedicating a lot of money for sidewalks around the school. And the child safety fund to be used for sidewalks.
Now, people discuss that, there is, that we can't use for sidewalks, it's, uh, you know, striking, um, we're uses for crosswalks, uh, flashers at schools. Um, we're actually looking to get a quote possibly to, to do some flashers possibly, um, at Italian, uh, right now, for that fund. The state statute under child safety doesn't allow for the kind of, uh.
Hi, and since so far I talked with the fire chief for a few minutes, we're going to very good supportive session beginning. And I was concerned with the reentry of assistant parks, you couldn't have that for years, possibly, 75, 100,000 of citizens. And after long discussion, I came to the conclusion, it's two for, uh, assistant parks, you have in our pocket, Ed was in the ministry, that you're basically getting two positions for the price of one, and that is, that's a reasonable justification for that, and, uh, under that conclusion. I haven't had to talk to the police department yet. Johnny's on television so often, I haven't had a chance to talk to him, but, but that's all my questions for right now. Thank you. And Mr. Ranger, is there?
No.
Let's take a look.
I just had a couple, um, I wanted to clarify that, as I said, that's a reprogrammed lower effective capacity, that it does not include money for the extractor or fire for the fire department.
This does not include, uh, the unfunded positions, if you, uh, if you look at the overall, and in my previous presentation, we had that, right now, obviously modify that to, um, new revenue as far as surplus and, and the revenue for the property, uh, is about 128,000. About 61,000 is for streets, which leaves about 67,000 in surplus. So if council did identify something like the extractor to be plugged in, uh, or as we've talked, um, about money for census, um, or even the request for the fire department on the education certification pay, those are considerations with the money that's there right now.
But they're not proven yet, so.
But it would take away again, in order to balance the budgets, um, originally I had transferred this into the street supplemental range. So right now, if you were using that 67,000, you would take that away from the street supplemental range fund to expend at those items.
Okay, so we do have, we are going to have a full-time, a full-time permit clerk present in the budget for next year for 2020?
Yes, a full-time permit clerk in the, in the. Yes, a full-time permanent clerk, given this, council Gregory mentioned that earlier about the two new personnel, part of the process for additives, two positions full-time could partially be self-funded off of those positions. In this budget, we programmed in 30,000 new revenue for passport, one-third of the time for the permanent clerk and the finance clerk being here full-time, we're able to spend about one-third of these doing passports. That money will fund off those positions. My intention or recommendation is for those positions to be in there, and as long as the passport office is doing well, those positions can be evaluated on a annual basis, depending on revenue.
Okay, I do understand that cities are expected by the government to participate since 2020, so I do have a little bit of concern that we have to put a couple thousand dollars towards that effort. It has been broadcast since the beginning of the year through the Bay County Council Cities and other organizations that we are expected to participate. And so I do have some concern that we are not budgeting for something that we need to be budgeted for and that we'll have to find money for at some place. This is not a giant sense, but I do think it's something that we need to have a line on. And so if we're asked what we're doing to support the efforts of census 2020, that we can show that we are doing something. And my concern, not on the extractor, is that we will end up with some sort of mandate regarding the health and safety of our employees. So these are two things that I don't think are hurdles, and I certainly appreciate that we hoped to expend more money on streets and drainage next year, and that you were programming this 67,000 dollars into that. But we do have a few things that we are expecting to legislate, we have a bunch of problems.
Well, councilman, two things on census, I've had meetings with, and Mr. Sanderson is kind of our point person, who's going to be helping with the census here. We met with Richard Castellano, I believe, who's heading through the county. And so my idea will be to find out what other local cities are funding for the census, and then we can come back and amend the budget later to plug that into a line item, once I know exactly what other suburban cities are standing on the census as well. The second part on that, on streets and drainage, and Mr. Gregory knows this, is that the Amber project is entirely funded out of that, and the idea when we rolled in the funds to streets and drainage, that could be sort of a cushion for doing further street projects under the streets seal code, or if there was some additional money here, because we have two projects that are in the pipeline right now, being BAN and Lynn Tower and the Mosa. So if we needed some money from contingency purposes to help out build one of those projects, we'd be able to utilize those funds.
I agree. I'm pleased with the projects that are in line for streets and drainage, especially the maintenance issues, which are so important and will help us prolong length of our infrastructure. So I appreciate your reasoning, thank you very much.
And again, the budget, there's four hundred thousand already plugged in for street maintenance. That hopefully will get us around 20, 22 streets. Once we get in line with the county, hopefully we'll get a better volume for material, maybe able to do more streets and then use some of that money to do hopefully at some point at 30, which was the goal of the entire street maintenance program when we went out for engineering last year or this year, I'm sorry.
All right, thank you for your explanation.
Mr. Sanderson?
Yes, sir. Mayor, I just want to highlight that what I continue to object to be kind of going on the budget because the eligibility of the council, and I believe the person who voted in, positions number three not being here, that none of the voters are able to be able to properly represent, thank you.
Okay, Mr. McFarquhar?
Yes, I have questions. I did want to compliment Mr. Verada for his work on Clinton 25, I watched some of that work, and it looked like it was not as fun, but it was certainly worth it, I appreciate that. My own guess is that it was on the order, 45, between 45 and 60,000 of work order, we can pay somewhere around the order of 5,000, 6,000 to buy to rent an excavator that they did not, and so I think we may have substantial savings from that. But to perfect the budget, Mr. Rattler, what I would like to add is that appears to me that all the money that we're losing from reduced tax revenue shows up beginning on page five, you have a figure for animal tax revenue, 3,547,038 dollars in this budget versus in the previous version, 3,656,26, and the total figure of 7,64,294 versus in the previous version of the budget, 7,182,82. And appears all of that money shows up in the general fund under streets and drainage, and appears to me that all of that shows up on page, two pages, 30 and 38 that are vast, all of them related to streets and drainage work. Is that about right?
Yes, sir, because within the three funds, we have the street maintenance, obviously, drainage fund, and the street and drainage supplemental. And so right now, we're carved out the BAN and Lynn Tower project to transfer out of there and paid for that project in particular. As I mentioned in response to council, I want to claim that some of the excess dollars that will be in there will be for contingency of some of those projects for street maintenance. But at the end of the day, unless council decides to add a project like we talked about, the extractor or census or anything else, that money will involve the streets drainage supplemental fund.
And so to respond to the question raised, sir, I know that the revenue reduction will result in the reduction of any of the expenditure to be planned for police, fire department works and ministry.
No, those were not intended for general fund operations, it was for street improvement and drainage.
Future.
I can conclude my questions, thank you.
Council made any questions?
Yes, Mr. Gregory.
I have a question, particularly for, is there any legal requirement by the federal government that a city spends money on the census?
I have not researched that, Mr. Gregory, I do not know the answer to that question. Certainly glad to find that out, that at roughly the same time, Mr. Rattler is checking to see what the county liaison says and what other suburban cities are doing. I was at a presentation to another city council in, I think, in August, where the gentleman who is the county liaison made a brief presentation to that government body, and that's something that this government body may want to request as well. But I would be glad to check and see if there's any federal statutory requirements in that regard.
Please move. Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Mr. Mayor, is that a vote or not?
That does seem to be a roll call, well, mayor. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. We're going to do a roll call vote, which is performed. All right, Mr. Sanderson?
No. No.
Okay, Mr. McLevy?
Aye.
Mr. Swinger?
No.
Mr. Gregory?
Aye.
Okay, the budget passes three, two. Any other comments? Okay, well, I will see you tomorrow at 6:30 in the primary meeting. We have a motion to adjourn.
Wait, there was, there was a question on the meeting tomorrow.
Yes, sir.
The reason for meeting tomorrow is because under the local government code, the government body must approve, must take action on the tax rate. That is the primary item to be acted on at the meeting tomorrow evening at 6:30. The local government code states that the actions to adopt the tax rate cannot be done on the same day that the public hearing on the budget was held, so that's why it cannot be on the agenda for this afternoon. Thank you.
And Mr. Mayor?
Yes, point of order, Mr. Schnal. In fact, last year, that's.
What's your point of order?
That's my point of order. It was, he just stated something that's not correct, it was done last year, we had a vote here, and we had a vote, and the tax rate on the same day. Do you know what day it was?
I was not present at that meeting. What happened last year doesn't really affect what needs to happen this year. The agenda for today's meeting is not included, and we did not tell the public that at this meeting that commenced at 2:00 on Sunday, the 29th of September, would include a vote on the tax rate. We have notified the public, and I hope all the members of the government body, that the meeting tomorrow includes the agenda item to adopt the tax rate and do ratification vote on that, as well as to ratify the fact that the tax rate and the budget includes new money as well. Those are the two action items for tomorrow, with the adoption of the budget today, the item on tomorrow's agenda in regard to the budget adoption is not necessarily moved, but the council does need to meet tomorrow in order to take action on the tax rate, I believe there's a proposed ordinance for that, and to also act on the other item on the agenda for tomorrow evening. I can't comment on what happened last year because I was not present during that.
Point of investigation, crime control, are we done? So what do we do then?
Got to start all, you got to keep the story, because you're going to turn time.
We did.
They did that. They have to get the post, you have to post in the paper.
So that was supposed to be done with part of this. We have a pending, we have a pending motion to adjourn, it's a privilege motion, there's another debate after the motion. We're listening to your mind, Mr. Sanders, not mine. And we're talking about the. Please. Oh, Mr. Schnal, I'm. So last year, last year, maybe we did. Mr. Rattler? Correct. Mr. Schnal, this is on the agenda, correct?
This is not on the agenda, Swanger raised a question about the, what's happening at the meeting, why can't the council vote on the tax rate today? That is what I was trying to respond to. I believe that Mr. Sanderson's question can be answered by Mr. Rattler after the meeting is concluded, so that he will get an answer to this question. But, you know, Mr. Forman's statement about a motion to adjourn being a privilege motion is correct.
Okay, so we have a motion to adjourn, Mr. Forman, we have a second?
Second.
All in favor? All opposed.